Okay, next I have Princess Smith of 50 George Williams Lane.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much councilman and mayor for allowing us up here to speak. So my name is Princess Smith and I'm with an organization, Project Freedom 326. You guys may have heard of us before. And I wanted to just let everybody know about this great thing that we are doing this year. I'm gonna announce it and I'm gonna let y'all ladies say it. Y'all wondering why they have all these lovely crowns and things, right?
They want to.
Yes, because we're doing a Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth Scholarship Pageant. And this pageant is not just about beauty. It's not just about scholarship monies. What's actually happening, and I'm up here speaking as a parent, this is my daughter right here. What I'm seeing happen is hard work, intellect. These young ladies are being coached by a very, very fine young woman who, her name is Coach K. She was Miss Mississippi and she just handed over her crown. And so she's here guiding these young ladies, but helping them to really tap into their talent, into what they're good at, and building a platform, and actually planning out their career and their future. And they're doing this right before our eyes, right here in Beaufort County. So they have the opportunity to do public speaking, to work through their fears, and to really, really walk strong into this world, knowing what they want and what they're gonna do. So ladies, do you wanna share some of the events and things that we have coming up or some of your experiences? And please let them know your name and your title.
My name is Eastland Tombo and I go to Bridges Preparatory and my title is Miss Beaufort Teen. And my platform is Character Building and Social Grace, and I'm all about that. And I also help out in the community. I do a tea party annually every year and it's free. And it's for the little girls in the community. And now we're doing boys too, so they can also have a little bit of experience with that. But I'm really about helping out in the community and spreading my word about how I feel.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ramai Smith. I am Miss Sheldon Teen. So my platform is Vivid Earth Art Inspiring Action for Wildlife, and I'm an artist. I've always had this passion for animals ever since I was a little girl. So I use my talent to make art, to bring awareness to the state of our wildlife and the local wildlife, and just how we can better interact with nature in general. So this pageant has really helped me really hone into what I wanna do with my career, especially because I wanna go to SCAD. So, and I really wanna make an impact on the nature around us in general, because it's really been a deep, deep passion of mine for a really long time. So I'm really happy that I joined this pageant, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, hi. My name is Raven Washington and Project Freedom. I represent Ms. Burton in the 2025 Age Division. For my platform, I preach more of confidence. For me though, I do struggle with the confidence, so I can't say that this pageant has grew that. For me, I look forward to teaching everybody younger than me to have that confidence, to feel beautiful in, you know, your body, same for males as well, because some males don't have that confidence either, which I've noticed. Sorry. Another thing that the pageant has taught me, it has taught me about the culture down here in the Low Country, some that I didn't even know, that, you know, school don't really teach that. So I just, I thank everybody in this pageant that has taught me those things.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so to anyone who is interested in learning more, interested in supporting these young ladies, how you can help them in any way, shape, or form, you can go to the website and I'll give it to you. Or you can meet me outside whenever, well, y'all might be a while. But I do have a flyer that you can scan the QR code. But the website is S C dash Juneteenth dot com. And just in case you have any problems with that one, I'll give you one more. It's P F three two six dot org. And I just wanna mention, ooh, 30 seconds. I just wanna mention one more thing. In our community, we see every day children struggling, teenagers struggling. There's not enough programming, I believe. I teach at a school, middle school. They're going through some things. There's depression, there's a lack of self-esteem and confidence. All of these issues can lead to other issues when they're adults. So we wanna nip this in the bud right now by supporting these kids and making sure that they always have a bright and strong future. So thank you so much, and that's my time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, it's gonna be a tough act to follow. Mike Tomy, Mike in the house?
He is, over on the left.
This is on an agenda item, so.
It is.
Yeah, sure. Pick me after that. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I, uh, my name's Mike Tomy, 1103 Craven Street, and I'm the Chairman of the Planning Commission. I just wanted to get up here because I wanted to head off later tonight, 10 or 11 o'clock, whatever it is, when you get to the new business, Section 9. And under Item B, it's the reading is Chapter 7 and 9. There may have been a little bit of confusion on the packets that you received. We are not presenting 9, 10, and 9 11. Those are the two historic sections having to deal with demolition, as an example. As, as I commented to you in the city retreat some months ago, we were gonna get together with, uh, H R B and have a discussion. Well, that turned into a review of properties. And Kurt and his staff had gone through a lot of trouble and presented, put together a matrix on the buildings, mostly in the Northwest Quadrant, and a scoring system on those, so that we could take a look at what was actually going on with the buildings. And quite frankly, even as we went through those buildings, there were some buildings that downgraded just because the last time they were looked at was over a year ago. And, and so degradation had taken place to the point where it was hard to justify looking at them in, in the contributing category. So as a part of that, and, and after that review, we have a subcommittee now that has been organized, and we have been meeting on a regular basis. And that includes HBF, H R B, Planning and Design Commission, as well as the Beaufort Jasper Housing Authority with Dick Stewart as a part of that. And so we've been reviewing a lot of information. And that information includes things that may not be in the code, but they will be a direct result of the code itself. In the meantime, we'd like you to review and approve, if you will, of those seven and nine, other than those two chapters in there. Because it's important that we move the rest of the codes forward, as you have already said. We will then input into that and have you review those two particular chapters separately. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Other than that, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Appreciate that, Mike.
Thank you.
Do they have any questions?
I will when we get to that portion of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Alright, that concludes the public comment. We'll move forward in the agenda for the meeting agenda approval. Oops, excuse me. Okay, sure. Absolutely.
Thank you. Jesse White, Coastal Conservation League. I apologize, I was chatting downstairs and did not make it in time to sign up for public comment. But I just wanted to just quickly thank the Planning Commission for all their hard work in getting these code edits to you all. Chapter 7 is very important, as you know, the land development chapter and the development review process. So we are very happy to see it on your agenda tonight, and just wanted to give a lot of credit and appreciation to the planning commissioners and to the planning staff for getting it to where it is tonight. And we look forward to it getting adopted into law. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, now, meeting agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have proclamations, a character education proclamation from Mason Page from Joseph S. Shanklin Elementary School.
Move accept.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mike, if you would.
I will. Whereas the character education movement reinforces the social, emotional, and ethical development of students. And whereas schools, school districts, and states are working to instill important core ethical and performance values, including caring, honesty, diligence, fairness, fortitude, responsibility, and respect for self and others. Character education teaches students how to be their best selves and how to do their best work. Eleven principles of effective character education include promoting core ethical and performance values, teaching students to understand, care about, and act upon these core values, encompassing all aspects of the school culture, fostering a caring school community, providing opportunities for moral action, supporting academic achievement, developing intrinsic motivation, including whole staff involvement, requiring positive leadership of staff and students, involving parents and community members, and assessing the results and striving to improve upon those results. The Beaufort County School District's character education program was formed to support parents' efforts in developing good character in their children. And the purpose of the character education program is to integrate good character traits into the total school environment as well as the whole community. Whereas the words are, that have been established for the list of character words and defined with no importance regarding political leanings, race, gender, or religious convictions. These words are friendship, kindness, acceptance, courage, tolerance, respect, gratitude, compassion, citizenship, perseverance, honesty, integrity, self-control, forgiveness, responsibility, and cooperation. And whereas Mason Page was selected as the winner of Joseph S. Shanklin Elementary School as the Student of the Month, now therefore the City Council of Beaufort hereby proclaims March of 2025 as Mason Page as Joseph S. Shanklin Elementary School Student of the Month. City of Beaufort hereby pronounces self-control as the word of the month for March and applauds Mason Page, the Beaufort County School District, Joseph S. Shanklin Elementary School, for their work and specifically honors Mason Page as Joseph, Joseph, this is a lot of S's. S. Shanklin Elementary School Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Mason, you wanna say anything?
He's a man of few words. So it is my honor to be here tonight. I'm Liz Rivera, Principal of Joseph Shanklin Elementary School. And I thank you, Mayor, and the other city councilmen for honoring one of our students tonight. Mason has been with us at Joseph Shanklin Elementary School since he was in pre-kindergarten. He came in, as many pre-kindergarten students do, it's a new adventure. There's lots to see, there's lots of people to see, there's lots of things going on. And over the years, he has continued to hone in on his self-control skills. Of course, being nominated by his classmates and then winning for the school, and then now here at the city council meeting as well, I'm extremely proud of Mason. And his family is very supportive, and I thank them for coming this evening, as well as our Assistant Principal, Dr. Daphne Bing, who's over there taking pictures, and his teacher, Ms. Jordan Nettles. We thank you all.
And thank y'all. Y'all had a wonderful. Y'all had a great leadership day at Shanklin. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate that. Okay, next we have a character education proclamation for Colby Coker at Beaufort High School.
Move acceptance.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is Colby here?
I do not believe he is here, so we are not gonna read it, but we'll get it out to him.
Okay, sounds good. Alrighty. Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming May 4th through 10th, 2025 as National Tourism Week. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna read it, Mike.
I'll be glad to if I can find it. Whereas the travel and tourism industry is a vital part of the economic, cultural, and social fabric of the city of Beaufort, tourism contributes significantly to the prosperity and well-being of local businesses, residents, and community by supporting thousands of jobs, generating revenue, and fostering community pride. Beaufort, South Carolina visitor spending exceeds $100 million annually, creating tax revenues, employment, and payroll for over 2,500 employees, while saving each household over 750 in taxes per year. Beaufort's rich history, breathtaking waterfront views, charming downtown, and unique southern hospitality makes it an iconic destination for visitors from around the world. Whereas the week of May 4th to May 10th marks National Tourism Week, an annual celebration that recognizes the critical role tourism plays in driving economic growth and enriching the lives of all who work, live, and visit our region. This special week also provides an opportunity to honor the contributions of industry professionals and local businesses that work tirelessly to create memorable experiences for every visitor to Beaufort. Through the continued development and celebration of tourism, we reinforce the unique identity and cultural heritage that makes the city of Beaufort an extraordinary place to visit, live, and to thrive. Now therefore, the City Council of Beaufort, South Carolina hereby proclaims May 4th through the 10th, 2025 as National Tourism Week and encourages all citizens to join in the celebration by supporting local initiatives, events, and businesses that highlight the importance of travel and tourism in our community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention, thank you so much to City Council, Mayor, council members, and city administration for your continued support of this vital piece of our economy. There are a lot of our friends and neighbors whose livelihood are dependent upon tourism dollars in our local economy. And thank you for your support, and thank you for this community for embracing tourism as such. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a proclamation proclaiming May 17th through 23, 2025 as National Safe Boating Week.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, Mike, again, if you.
I'm up to it. Whereas the United States Power Squadrons throughout the local Beaufort Sail, through the local Beaufort Sail and Power Squadron, America's Boating Club of Beaufort is joined with the Beaufort City Council in promoting education for safe boating and all, for all of our citizens. Whereas 75% of all persons that go overboard drown, and that 67% of those that were reported to have been able to swim. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not due to the boat equipment or environmental factors. And 85% of drowning fatalities were not wearing a life jacket. And most of the boaters who lost their lives by drowning would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas modern life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than the styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. Now therefore, the City Council of Beaufort hereby proclaim May 17th through the 23rd of 2025 as National Safe Boating Week and urges those who vote to vote smart, vote safe, and wear it, and to always practice safe boating habits. Congratulations and thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. The Beaufort Boating and Power Squadron has been in existence here in Beaufort since 1961. We have about 95 members at this point. We take safety and education to be very important, and we really appreciate the support of the council. And we're hoping that this will get word out and more boaters will wear life jackets. And that, as you've heard by the statistics, will help save lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you for what y'all did.
Okay, and the last proclamation is proclaiming May 2025 as National Preservation Month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Whereas, preservation groups, business, and civic organizations across America celebrate historic preservation during the month of May through events that promote and honor historic places and heritage tourism, and demonstrate the social, cultural, and economic benefits of historic preservation. And we understand that historic preservation fosters community pride, revitalizes and retains the livability of neighborhoods, promotes sensitive and sustainable development. And historic preservation is a major component of the city's tourism economy, and with more than 750,000 visitors annually who are attracted to the Beaufort Riverfront location, climate, architecture, and history. And whereas in 1944, the John Mark Bedeere House was slated for demolition when a group of forward-thinking citizens came together as the city's earliest preservationists to rescue the 1804 Federal Period Structure located in the historic Core Business District. And whereas Beaufort Historic, whereas Historic Beaufort Foundation was chartered in June of 1965 to preserve, protect, and present sites and artifacts of historic architectural and cultural interest in Beaufort County, South Carolina. And Beaufort's National Historic, Historic District was designated a national historic landmark in 1973, the same year National Preservation Week was first proclaimed by resolution on May 5th, 1973. Whereas in 2025, in the bicentennial year of the Marquis de Lafayette's historic visit to Beaufort in 1825, the Beaufort community continues to celebrate the importance of our shared history and demonstrates its commitment to historic preservation and the need to cherish the unique sense of place Beaufort provides. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beaufort, South Carolina do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Preservation Month in Beaufort, South Carolina, and urges the citizens of Beaufort to join in the recognition of a critical role that historic preservation plays in our city and our economy, and to celebrate the benefits of preservation year-round. Congratulations.
Good evening. Lisa Sunderland of the Historic Beaufort Foundation. We are so delighted to be before you tonight in recognition of National Preservation Month. It's been a busy year in our community, and as was stated in the proclamation, with not only the Marquis de Lafayette celebration and recognition that happened this year, there have been so many exciting events that have happened related to our history, to discovery within our community over the recent years. I think that we, as a community, need to continue to move forward with regard to preservation, with regard to protection of not only our historic built environment, but also that oral history that we are rapidly losing within our community. So every opportunity that we as citizens have, we should learn from our grandparents and our great-grandparents in our community and make sure that we carry those stories forward and that we carry that sense of history and sense of place that makes Beaufort so special. And I know I am honored and delighted to be a resident of Beaufort and having moved back again after many years. And I know new members coming to our community today are so happy to be here and understand what it means to be a part of the Low Country and to be a part of a community that is so rich and so respectful of its history and its economic and natural environment. So thank you again for letting us bring this to you today and presenting the proclamation. And we look forward to a wonderful National Preservation Month and also working towards improvements such as the repair program for the Historic District and other initiatives that we can work with the city of Beaufort on. So thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes of work session and regular meeting of April 8th, 2025?
Move accept.
Second.
Okay, any changes? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now to old business. This is a public hearing and second reading on an ordinance to annex 2.8 acres of real property located at 3492 Tras Parkway, R 100 025 000012A 0000, into the city of Beaufort pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated 5-3-153. Do I have a motion?
Move accept.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
I'll just wanna clarify something. So last, in our last session, I actually voted against this. And the reason for that was mainly because the application that we had in front of us indicated that the city had identified this property in their future land use plan, in the comprehensive plan. And, and my understanding is that state statute governs that in such a way that we have to, as council members, take into consideration the future land use in the comprehensive plan whenever we go to rezone or annex property, specifically rezoning it. And so my concerns were from a legal perspective was, did, did, was it okay for us to downzone property that was identified as industrial to T1? The reality is, after getting clarification from our legal representation in the city, is that because our comprehensive plan actually never did identify this parcel, the county's comprehensive plan identified this parcel as industrial, and because it's being annexed into the city, we're not necessarily governed by that same law to, to consider the future land use, because we didn't identify it at all. So my legal concerns were clarified. I did have additional concerns with the precedent for the billboard. Legal cleared those up for me as well. So tonight, both on the annexation and the rezoning, I'm going to change my vote, but I just wanted to clarify and articulate the reasons for why.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signify by, you know, all in favor of the. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Yeah.
You, that was, that was a great speech. You don't have to repeat it. We'll.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public meeting, uh, hearing. Anyone have anything to say? Hearing none, and we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll call for the vote. All in favor of annexing that parcel of 3492 Tras Parkway into the city of Beaufort? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Alright, next is a public hearing and second reading on an ordinance to amend the city of Beaufort zoning code district map to rezone real property identified as 34th 92 Tras Parkway, R 100 025 000012A 0000 to Natural Preserve District or T1. I'm going to ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor or any discussion?
Well, you can open the public hearing.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. It's open. Anyone wanna comment? Hearing none. Closed.
Call the question.
Call the question. All in favor signify of rezoning this real property at 3492 Tras Parkway to Natural Preserve District T1. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, all, all opposed? Okay. Ayes have it. Okay, motion passes. Okay. Next, we have an ordinance to amend Sections 1-9031 and 1-9032 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beaufort, South Carolina to change the composition of the Cultural District Advisory Board. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Sarah, but you didn't say anything.
Second reading, we know it. We're old hat of this, so.
Okay, we're going fast because we've got a long meeting tonight. Next is an ordinance to amend fiscal year 2025 budget for revenues of general fund. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. I'm gonna call, you know, Alan, you're already up, so.
Yeah, I'll just give you just.
A brief overview?
Yeah, this is, this is from the State Central General Assembly. Appropriated $1.5 million to facilitate the purchase of the cyber security education facility. And the city is required to accept this one-time state appropriation by June 30th, 2025. I have answered questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance passes. Now onto new business. A public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to amend the city of Beaufort zoning district map by changing the zoning designation of real property located at 30 Cougar Drive, identified as Beaufort County Tax Map Number R 123 015, located at 32, 30 Cougar Drive, excuse me, 0000110000 from T3 Suburban District or T3S to Institutional and Campus District 1C. Or T three S to institutional and campus district one C.
I see.
I see, excuse me.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Public hearing.
Yeah, that's right. Alright, I'm opening the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak?
I guess I could present the request. If it shows up on the screen here, you know, give it a second. But it is a public hearing, um, thirty Cougar Drive, there it goes, it's popping up. Um, this is Beaufort County School District. For whatever reason, in twenty seventeen, this property was zone T three, which is our like suburban residential district. I I I really don't know the reasons why, but it's the middle school and so obviously owned by the school district. And uh, that zoning creates some challenges for development. Obviously, it's intended for. Single-family residential is not intended for large-scale institutional buildings. And and so you can see where the where this is, I think on Ladies Island, everybody um, kinda has an idea where that is already, but uh. Blood plane map and this is kind of a street view of what we're looking at here. And the future land use plan, but uh. Essentially, they're doing an addition and the addition would trigger um. A lot of sections of code that, you know, the T three is just not suitable for um, both height setbacks. It would really be challenging for them to build the addition, um, and especially with the height requirements in this current um, district. And really, the institutional campus um, district was intended for. Schools, um, the university, um, et cetera, considering um, that they have special circumstances, that they're large lots. And that they build much larger buildings, larger in scale buildings. And that district essentially rolls back or does not have the form-based code standards for. A lot of the fenestration, a lot of the design requirements, so allows a lot of flexibility as well. And so uh, moving to this IC district would essentially allow the school district to build the addition without really any impact, I think, on the current school. Um, and without really needing to get any variance where they, you know, ton of variances. Um, and so it really just makes sense, um, and and looking at the findings of fact, there's seven to rezone a property. Um, you know, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan and civic master plan? Yes, and and we kinda looked at this uh. It's kind of circled there, it's a little hard to see, but that's kind of a, you know, kind of more of an institutional um, district. It's really hard to see, isn't it? Um, compatibility with surroundings, um, you know, this is a large tract that's uh, kind of close to the water. Um, and close to a lot of residential uh, housing, but uh, you know, we do feel like it would meet that. Suitability of the property, yes, compatibility with natural cultural resources, yes. Markability of property, yes, and availability of roads, sewer and water, uh, yes, so. You know, it's really to the benefit, I think, of the whole community that this gets rezoned and uh, really speed up their process, but I'm sure they'll wanna speak on it. And it was unanimously approved by the uh, planning commission on four twenty-one and this was advertised for a notice and everybody within. Noticing distance, uh, received notice as well for a public hearing tonight, so.
Thank you, Kurt, anyone wish to speak?
Yes, sir, thank you. My name is Mark Cole, uh, project manager for the school district. A slight clarification, the planned use for this bill or this site is a complete brand-new school. We're gonna replace the existing. And this zone zoning change allows us to do a more compact building. Allows the existing operation to happen, including the athletics. With, you know, just. And all that, you know, really what that means is is that there's less trouble in terms of construction zone and a fully operational. School zone. In addition, with a more compact plan, we've got less impact on stormwater, less trees we've got to mitigate. And um, like I say, just in the end, it's a far more better design which this zoning allows us to do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any discussion by council, comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye. Okay, now we're gonna move to a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending. Chapter seven, land development and chapter nine, development review procedures of the Beaufort Development Code. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, I'm gonna. Open the public hearing and Kurt, you wanna go ahead and give us an update?
Yeah, sure, um. I think Mike got up here uh, just a little bit ago with the public um, comment session. But as you can see from your packet, uh, there's been a lot of time and many hours uh, expended by a lot of very qualified people on this and. Um, and also some citizens and uh, the Coastal Conservation League and this fairly. We've had, I, you know, probably forty hours somewhere around that of of uh. Time on on just this, um, these two chapters and um. And really to the testament of all those people that have been working on it free, uh, including a number of attorneys who have been. Working free hourly on a lot of these things and um, and unfortunately, um, I I think I was uh. We noticed a mistake, there's someone um, brought up a mistake on the red line that uh, the uh. Attorney, the Ben, when he made the revisions, um, this was um. The red line, for whatever reason, adopted, had had taken some of the. Taken what was approved by the planning commission in February and kind of already accepted the red line, so. We will give that to you tomorrow or Thursday to, but the code, the ordinance that's in before you is the correct ordinance that was a. Approved in Ja- uh, February eleventh by the planning commission unanimously. And so they've had a number of of meetings again, uh, just. Really, um, what is this, uh, and you know, with this started in April twenty twenty-three? That process, I think, has really been a three-fold process and uh. You know, it started out with like a hundred and twenty-page list of of issues of of edits of uh. Just revisions that were either brought by developers or councilmen or our planning commissioners or uh, just, you know, citizens that they noticed some errors or. Issues that they thought that the code should change and so. When the new planning commission was set, um, after the code edit sessions were done. They started to work on this uh, in the summer of last year, these two chapters. And these two chapters are are somewhat major because chapter seven is the uh. Where the streets, infrastructures and uh, like major subdivision site planning standards exists and chapter nine is where all of the approval finding standards noticing requirements exist. And so uh, that's why they're, they've taken, I think, the most amount of time is because uh, they are kind of the core, the foundation, if you will, of a lot of of things that you do. Um, and a lot of the issues that I think the city's been finding and so. You know, I think there's really three things to think about that are to focus on um, here with this is is, you know, one. With that hundred and twenty-point list is, really this was um, trying to correct mistakes, errors, typos. You know, I'd I'd say um, we went over every single sentence, every single word. Maybe twice, I'm not, I'm not kidding and I, you know, I I could do better with that kind of thing, so, but. Like, there's a lot of people that are very qualified, uh, I'm looking at this a number of times, but uh, there were just a tremendous amount of. Um, errors in uh, just, well, just, it's just a lot of things that had never been addressed. When this was adopted in twenty seventeen, so a lot of uh. References that were broken, um, just words that didn't, or sentences that didn't make sense or code sections that didn't make sense. And just needed to be buttoned up, so that's the first part of this and I think that's where this kind of started, so it kind of morphed a little bit. Second was the kind of the piece that, uh, you know, we've heard, I think, a lot from the community and I think the planning commission was very sensitive to and that's uh. Especially the roadways and the infrastructure um, requirements. Um, and the major subdivision requirements and. And I think what we're, what we attempted to do with this code is to create predictive standards that are very uh. Comprehensive and so that uh, standards that citizens, um, council, commit, planning commission. And developers all are working under the same guidelines and that uh. Those guidelines are are clear and uh, and they're used to actually approve a project. But in the case of traffic, streets, that kind of thing, that we've expanded the the guidelines to, you know, make sure that we that we. Carefully um, consider um, all the development that's been occurring and its impacts on um, our city and its infrastructure, so. That's that's kind of that piece, that's the second piece um, that and that we're doing and then, you know, that uh, that that's probably the most amount of the changes. The most amount of pages and and new material, which again, you know, should be in red, but I'll send that to you tomorrow. But a lot of that, um, and it, uh, and then the third, I think, uh, which, you know, is maybe, you know, the most important is a lot of these processes were. Um, administrative. And as I've stated, did not have clear guidelines for the planning commission or the MPC at the time to make decisions and so. I know in my short time here and I think if you ask Mike or um, some of the citizens or. You know, and maybe if you watch some meetings, I I know Josh watches a lot of them. There would be challenges where developers would come with, like I say, a sketch plan and uh. They really provide much and the. You know, commission would want them to provide things, but and staff would want them to provide things, but because there's nothing in the code, they. Didn't have to, they didn't want to and that that extended the time that they'd be before the commission. And and just became a little bit of a, you know, a a problematic um, process, but the other, the other big issue is is that. You know, many of these major subdivision and and site plan approvals um, that are. You know, these are new apartments, these are new, you know, commercial uh. Subdivisions or um, you know, stores or these are new subdivisions, you know, single-family subdivisions, all in our current code. Really do not require a public hearing. And so that is a problem, I I think, that that the planning commission really wanted to address and and the fact that. None of the neighbors and. Any of these projects received notice. These were only public meetings at the planning commission for making some of these decisions and so that's not typical, as you can imagine, around the country. Um, and with some of the concerns, you know, I I, you know, to make it more fair and to create a better process, I think, for everyone in this, uh, every citizen. And and for the planning commission, I think, as well. Just creating kind of a new. Transparent guidelines where these become public hearings, they're not just uh, an administrative or a uh. Just a public meeting that, you know, you'd have to be, I I I know one of the citizens here, I think, looks at our agenda literally every day. Just to see what is actually going on because, you know, we we can't. We can't legally send out note letters when we're not required to, to tell you that there's gonna be a new, you know, um, project. And and right next to your house, right, because uh, that that would get us sued, so. But now we're requiring it per the code and so. Hopefully, that's a a an okay uh, description of everything we've done, you know, I could be gone forever, I can answer any question you have with this, but it's a lot of stuff and um. You know, again, we had a an amazing group of people working on this for the last, uh, like, I guess, seven or eight months. You know, you had three attorneys and a few of them with extensive, I mean, one with forty-five years of land use experience, that's his, that's his MO, right? Two architects, um, yeah, like Mike, um, we had a developer, a local developer who's been, you know, developing here his whole life and a engineer, a civil engineer. And so that's, that's quite a, a and then the the people that assisted um, also were, you know, had a lot of experience um, as well and so uh. You know, I'd just like to also thank my staff, but you know, we have some new planners have been really helpful as well. And you know, it's a lot longer than we expected, but uh, I think we have a better product and so with that, I'll shut up and let you guys question, so let Josh ask questions, I I should say, so.
This is public, this is public hearing.
This is public hearing right now, anyone have? I've already started it.
I know that, he was gonna start asking.
Oh, okay. Um, anyone else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and now I'm gonna open it up for discussion by council. Josh, I'm sure you.
I can start.
Please.
Might as, well, you might as well, cause you'll probably blanket all of ours.
No, um, so first I just want to extend my thanks to the planning commission, Kurt and your staff. And Diane and Jesse, I know you guys spend a lot of time going through the agenda and you're the the minutes in here and the meetings that are recorded definitely reflect the efforts that you both put into it. So thank you for all of that and I'm excited to see these these code edits, I think there's um, you know, a lot of members in our community that have wanted to see. Uh, especially these two chapters um, reviewed, updated and this code process implemented. Sooner rather than later. I do have some concerns. Want my my very first concern is, I don't know who decided to put this red line in the packet, but this. Okay, so this does the planning commission a disservice because. It really doesn't highlight the amount of work that went into these changes. Because it really identifies a fraction of the changes that were made. So I'm gonna go through what I did, I got my my packet actually last night and that was my own fault. I was a- out of town and unable to pick it up, but I do depend heavy on the hard copies at this time, I need to do better at that and maybe do some more on the computer. But regardless, I'm gonna try to organize my thoughts and just go through the chapters. And discuss some of the parts that were not redlined in this packet, but really should have been.
Yeah, I'll I'll give you that.
For, yeah.
Week and and what happened is you're getting the copy that that Ben made changes to and without all the rest of it.
Yep.
So that was what happened, it was an accident and I think I'm a little allergic because there's like thirteen of these versions and I think I just. I looked at it and it, I was trying to give you information and.
Well, I I will tell you, I'm.
Go through and I thought, oh.
Probably gonna vote to to pass this to get it through, because I know it'll be two readings, but if we don't see, and I it's important for us, of course, because we're we're passing it, but it's also very important for the public to be aware of what changes are being made and if they look at this packet. And and the changes are not redlined, then they're not gonna have an idea of what is being changed and some of this is pretty meaty and it's it's. Big changes, so on um, the the first page here, uh, chapter seven, on the redline version. F or seven point one point one purpose, F, G, H and I are all new, so those are new additions that were not in before, but they're not redlined here. And I'm gonna go through some of this pretty quickly, the table, seven dot one dot three, table of required improvements. Some of the changes here are uh, before in T one zoning district. None of those uh, clear boxes were were there, which it says may be required at the discretion of what used to say. Administration, but now says planning commission and it's not that I'm not in favor of those changes, but again, going back to transparency, I think it's very important for the public to be aware of those changes because there is a difference. If you're getting something um, discretionately reviewed by a planning commission of seven members and administration. So I think it it would have been very important for that to be clear here. In the uh, T five U C and the R M X at the bottom where it says community green space and open space. Those are now required improvements by the district, which before they had no boxes in them at all. So from not being reviewed to being reviewed by the planning commission and then not not identified here, so hopefully in the next version that we see tomorrow. Not just the verbiage in the red line, but also the charts, every change.
We've done it all, it's not a problem.
Will be made. Um, on the, on the next page, two seventeen says, um, this is uh. It talks about street improvements, A, B is water and sewer facilities and C is utility lines. The back half of that, the planning commission may approve an exception only in cases where there are existing above-ground lines that serve the property. That's all new, that that's not identified here, but those are, that's all new verbiage. Um, I'm not sure why in improvement guarantees, the cross-reference was deleted, but it says prior to approval of. Final subdivision plat, which used to read cross-reference section nine dot dot nine dot four. I think that the cross-references do good in the code and and unless there was good justification for deleting the cross-references. I think they add value because as I'm going through and reading the code, I can just hover over that cross-reference and then see what's being referred to. Opposed to having to go back and try to find out where I need further clarification, so I would advocate. Um, and I'm gonna try to run through this and then you could, uh, cause I know you wanna probably jump in here.
Sure, I mean, like I said, you know, again, there's a lot, I mean, there's. We probably, half of the pages you're seeing are new.
Right, right, and 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 the reason that I'm gonna go through it now is because we're gonna get through first reading, we're probably gonna pass this and so I wanna at least try to cover some of what.
Sure.
Was able to see um, for for the for the public's sake, but um. I think anytime we can leave a cross-reference in there, it's valuable to um, whoever is trying to understand what the code is saying, so I would advocate for the deleted cross, cross-references to be put back in. The uh. Easement and utility standards, I think all of that is new, I didn't, couldn't find that anywhere. I didn't, couldn't find that anywhere else in the code. Maybe I missed it, but I think all that's new. It's not identified here. The, um, street infrastructure plans, uh, subsection two. It used to read that the planning commission would review or planning would review every six months. Now it reads, in addition, the maps will be automatically updated as additional official maps are approved. The appropriate process required by state law. So maybe it's more appropriate for it to read that way, but that's a pretty big change. If the planning commission was gonna review it every six months and now it's automatically gonna be updated. Moving down, again, the cross-reference and applicability was removed. So for any project that is considered part of a major subdivision site plan, it used to have a cross-reference to section nine, eight, three. That has been removed. Scope of improvements, I think all of that is either new or moved from somewhere else in the code. And on page two twenty one, it talks about street network requirements. B is block faces and then subsection three of that, it says in T four, T five, and RMX zone, blocks shall be no more than four hundred feet on any side. That did not used to include RMX, so now that includes our RMX zones. That's a pretty big change that wasn't identified in this version. Exemptions for street stubs, street stubs shall not be required. And this adds where the planning commission finds the conditions listed below would prevent connections. It's a change. I think that was used to be in administrative role. Now it's the PC. Again, there's a big difference in sending something to the planning commission. I'm not saying that's a bad change. I'm just saying, again, it's one that I would want to be reflected in here for, for transparency sake. The environmental conditions are part of the exemptions. And it says environmental conditions, it used to read marshes and flood plains. Now it reads marshes, flood plains, specimen and landmark trees. Probably a good addition, um, but again, would want it to be shown. The under design, um, bullet point B was actually deleted entirely. And then C was moved up to its place to now read as be stub streets shall not exceed a hundred and fifty feet in length. And I, and I think that that would show as crossed out in your other version, correct? So it would still be there and it'd be crossed out and then the.
Yeah, like I, I said, I can send, well, I'll send that to you all tomorrow. But, uh, the clean copy is correct, but, uh, you know, it has all of it in there. But there's a lot of changes. So if you, if you know what, the major changes you have concerns with, I could address.
Yep. And I'm, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna get right into that. What I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna skip some of the stuff that, um, is added that we'll, we'll see a copy of. And I'm sure that would be part of our packet next time, um, but then get into some of the, the other concerns. Neil probably has a concern with this one under street designs and standards. What was added is traffic control such as roundabouts should be considered first. I agree with that. I like roundabouts, a well-designed one, well-placed. Neil's generally not in favor of them. So I was just wondering if maybe you saw that new addition. And again, that's in, uh, seven two four, street design standards subsection B. The, me. All right. So if you look at traffic access management analysis, um, under one A, it says access improvements such as lane deceleration lanes that the applicant must install at the applicant's own. And then it stops there. The word expense is after that, but it's crossed out. So I think maybe going back and just making sure that word is not crossed out, so the sentence reads that the applicant, um, must install at the applicant's own expense would, would make sense. And I think that it's kind of clear that's what it's talking about, but expenses crossed out. The subsection two, the access requirements approved by the planning commission or the TRC shall be incorporated on development or subdivision plans prior to their approval. My opinion is, is that needs to be clear at who's approving that. If it's the planning commission, okay. If it's TRC, okay. I don't know that it should read that either or could approve it, because then it maybe it's a little bit confusing.
I think that's, uh, the case because there are some minor, um, kind of permitting. That's why it's dual split, because most things, as you can see, as you're going through all these, essentially, you know, we're devolving everything to a public body instead of a administrative body. But in that case, there are some things like minor subdivisions, et cetera, where it is administrative approval. So that would be more of a staff law. It wouldn't go to the planning commission. That's why it's a split. Does that make sense?
Traffic analysis, plan preparation, one, the TIA shall be conducted by an engineer registered in South Carolina, who is experienced in the conduct of traffic analysis. Um, I know that we had briefly talked about that last year in a work session where we talked about maybe not leaving it so wide open. Maybe right now, if we don't have anybody to review them in-house or with the county, um, I think it would probably be better to have, you know, the same person reviewing all of these so that we make sure that they know what has been, um, previously done on maybe another development. But I also know that that was captured in the next chart. You guys have planned contents. And it says incorporation of all traffic impact analysis studies and trip generation from approved developments or vested unbuilt developments within a mile radius at time of proposal, which I think is really good. We've talked about that maybe being, um, a loophole in the code as it exists to where you don't have to factor in other developments in the TIA's that they had. So I think that that's a, a good change. It says, well, that just adds the planning commission to reviewing the TIA's, which is, think is appropriate. On page two thirty one, subsection H, uh, bullet point double lowercase i. It says the first major intersection as identified by the city engineer on both sides of the development point of access. Now, in other areas here, it talks about the city engineer or administration or whatever. I think that needs to be added here because we don't have a city engineer, do we? So.
No, we would use a consultant.
So there's, there's a couple, right? So there's a couple other, um, references that are the same, one on page two fifty and one on page two fifty one, where it just talks about this city engineer reviewing it. And I think that if it says city engineer and/or then fine, because maybe we have a city engineer down the road. But I think at least it needs to have, um, an additional review option in there in the event that we don't have a city engineer, which we don't right now. This goes back to a question I had before, which was the planning commission and/or TRC shall determine whether the TIA is complete. And it sounds like maybe there's smaller or minor case where it may be more appropriate for the TRC. And then major cases where it may be more appropriate for the planning commission. I'm gonna assume that that's why the language reads and/or. The, I like the addition of community green space definition and community open space definition in this section of the code. I think it clarifies what those are. Um, and so I like moving that here. The, this is, this is a big, this is a big deal, um, because this change really does add to the code. And, and we've talked about this, but again, I'm gonna read this just so that it's clear for the public in this, in this version, that's not identified in red. But in the chart that talks about open and civic space requirement, there was a tab added for less than three acres and a tab added for three acres to ten acres. The previous code or the code that exists now does not include either of those options. So in addition to that change, um, fifteen acres to forty acres now requires fifteen percent open space. Whereas before it required ten percent. Greater than forty acres used to require five percent. It is now requiring twenty percent. That's a pretty big jump. I'm in, I'm in favor of, of more open space. I don't know if, if twenty percent's the right number. But where it used to be completely exempt in T five UC, RMX and IC. T five UC is now ten percent for ten to fifteen acres, fifteen percent for fifteen to forty acres and twenty percent for greater than forty. Again, those are big changes and, um, something that we, we would want to see. And then also, uh, you know, be very clear for, for the public that, that those are changing.
And those kind of dovetail with, so I think we're gonna have, finished at the work session yesterday, chapter five, which was the tree standard. So, so those will be going to you hopefully whenever the attorney, um, well, they have to approve them on Monday. But, uh, essentially they're gonna have canopy standards that are gonna be twenty percent for every project. And so, you know, eliminate existing canopy standards. And so they kind of dovetail with the open space. So it's.
But the change that you guys are making in chapter five now dovetail into some of the.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, that was the thought. So, you know, I, I think everybody identified that, you know, the Buford is known for its trees and, and, and natural environment. And, you know, we want to preserve more of it, right? And especially existing trees. And so that was the goal behind those things.
Yep.
But, uh.
Um, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate those changes. Like I said, uh, well, like you pointed out, there were some, some good minds that went into determining these percentages. And I'm sure there was a lot of justifiable thought that went into why we would increase from five percent to twenty percent. Again, I think that's a lot, twenty percent of forty acres. Um, I, I think that's a lot, but we're, we're known for our trees. So I'm not gonna, um, fight that tonight. But, uh, some of the other changes on the community green space chart, if you look down at permitted districts for a sports complex, it's now permitted in RMX. It wasn't before for a community park. Um, it's now permitted in T five. It was not before. For square and green space, it is now permitted in T three. It was not before. Pocket and Park Pocket Plaza is now permitted in T three and RMX. It was not before this. Playgrounds are now permitted in RMX. It was not before. On page two fifty one, um, subsection E, it says, if the owner of a community green space and/or community open space fails to maintain it in reasonable condition, and in accordance with approved plans and fails to correct deficiencies cited by the city, the city shall have the authority to correct the deficiencies per, at the owner's expense. So I think the word per just needs to be struck there and then it would read shall have the authority to correct the deficiencies at the owner's expense. So strike that word and that's done. Question for you on page two forty five, minor amendments, bullet point two, it says, I'll just read the, the part to get context here. Minor amendments to the sketch plan may be approved administratively. One, if it does not change any land use or location of any land use. Two, does not change the number of lots or density by more than ten percent. So my question is, if I have a sketch plan and I get it approved and I come to you, um, in April and I say, I wanna change this and it's less than ten percent. Say it's five percent and I come back in May and I have another five percent change. Um, and I come back the next month with another five, does, is that capped at ten percent for the, all of the changes being requested? Or does that leave?
The implication, yeah, overall.
So it's, it's no more than ten percent of your original sketch plan. And, and maybe some language needs to be built in to ensure that that's what is being addressed here. Because I don't know that it says, um, by more than ten percent of your original sketch plan approval.
Okay, we could add the original. And if you, yeah, if you can give me a few of these, uh, uh, that would be great. Because I can have them all collected by the second, uh, reading.
Yep, that, that was, um.
And again, the sketch plan is like the overall concept of a large development. If it's Buford Station or if it's like Salem Bay, right, that would be a sketch plan.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows what it means.
So this is getting into the, um, extensions and the permitting times. I will kick back a little bit here because they were reduced from, um, five, one-year extensions all the way down to one. And I don't think that that's appropriate, maybe the middle ground of three, but I also wanted to point out, I think there's some inconsistencies, um, here. And, and maybe I'm wrong. And as I read it, we'll, we'll figure it out. But it says plat approval is in full force and effect for a period of two years from the, oh, I'm sorry, two forty eight, uh, subsection G. So timeframe related to approval of preliminary plat. Plat approval is in full force and effect for a period of two years from the date of approval. Approval will automatically expire at the end of two years unless an applicant formally requests an eighteen-month extension from the planning commission. So if you go over to page two fifty nine, where you have this chart, I do not see an option for an eighteen-month extension. They, all of the extensions are for either six months or twelve months.
Okay, I'll have to, we spent a lot of time on that chat, on that too. So, uh, I'll have to check what happened with that.
Okay.
The, the goal though is, is that, uh, currently you can have five years plus two, one-year extension. So it's a seven-year approval. And I think you're seeing, you know, a lot of projects that were approved in, say, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, that just never move going up right now, that, uh, you know, were approved under, you know, a far different traffic, uh, impact analysis, because, you know, uh, in twenty nineteen, there, the three other, uh, complexes weren't in existence, right? But that seven years later, they're going up.
No, and I, and I wanna, and I wanna appreciate that mechanism. I don't know that one, one extension is, is enough. Maybe there's a, cause some of these projects do take time and so you wouldn't wanna have to go all the way back to.
We spent a lot of time on that and the thought was, is that, uh, you know, a preliminary is, uh, in the sketch are, you know, you should get going on them, right? You should, we, we should, you know, because you're, once when you go past that three or four years, then you're, we're getting into situations where, you know, other development is now changing the dynamic completely, right? And so.
Right. But the traffic impact analysis now is gonna factor in all of the other developments that were approved, but not necessarily permitted or started yet. So I think we're capturing it.
We're capturing it, but, uh, you know, we wanted to kind of reduce it down a lot. So you're not getting an approval for like six, you know, five or six years. And the traffic analysis is six years ago.
Part of what I aim to do tonight is just identify these and then obviously we'll get another bite at this when we have second reading or if we meet sometime in the middle and, and further discuss. But I wanna identify, I would look at that because I don't see any eighteen-month extension options. So I think that needs to reflect the chart.
I'm surprised that didn't get.
And then, uh, again, this is two fifty where it talks about, uh, as amended or as the city engineer may approve. I think there needs to be an additional option there because we don't have a city engineer. Same thing for the next page, two fifty one says file and an AutoCAD drawing file of the final plat in an electronic format specified by the city engineer. I'd add some more, some more language in there.
And again, all those sections you're talking about are all new. So, you know, those are all completely new. There's nothing in the code right now.
Right. Page two fifty six, post-approval actions, um, bullet two, phasing and expiration of approval. The site plan shall be effective for a period of three years from the date of approval. I, I don't know if it should read, if three years is the number, two years with a one-time, one-year extension. If that's the case, then I think it should read that way to where it's two years with a one-year extension. If it just reads the site plan shall be effective for a period of three years, that could be confusing if the reality is, is that it expires after two and you have to submit for an application one month prior to getting your additional extension.
Yeah, well, I'll check that.
So that is on page two fifty six. And so coming to the chart on two fifty nine, again, every, everywhere where you used to be able to get, um, five extensions, you can now get a one-time twelve-month extension. We can further talk about what the appropriate time might be if it is in fact one. Um, I have concerns with maybe that not being enough time, but I've also never developed anything before. So I, I don't know. And then in the historic preservation, you do give twenty-four months for the approval, twelve months and up to three times. So I'm not sure why the difference for minor and major development in the historic district, why they would get, um, five years and your other developments would get three, but maybe that's something you guys talked about too.
That's what y'all go revisit.
Um, so the historic, the nine point one that's in there, um, is the, just the current code. They made a recommendation last year in June, but it hasn't, we haven't sent it to you. We're, we're reworking that.
No, that's not the case. So this is historic preservation, Buford Historic District's certificate of appropriateness for minor and certificate of appropriateness for major.
That's part of that. So that just, we just kept that frozen. So, so the nine point.
Used to read five times and now it reads three.
Okay, but maybe I'm, I'm, since I don't have it right.
Yeah.
But, uh, that would be consistent with everything else, but, uh.
Well, that's the thing is, is if, if you're gonna get five years in the historic preservation to both minor and major, then I'm not sure why it would be appropriate to only get one time anywhere else. And, and again, maybe we could discuss that further, but it, it wasn't left the same as what. And, and again, maybe we could discuss that further, but it, it wasn't left the same as what it originally is in the code now because the code reflects five times and this says three.
Yeah, I'll have to check that because that just doesn't, I don't think we ever really talked about that.
Um, and then on the two sixty, the, basically the bottom half of this chart, um, you have some definitions in there. So it says admin dash administrator, PC dash planning commission, CC, city council. Um, there was nothing for um, ministerial and I don't know if there needs to be because now where it used to say um, admin, it says ministerial. So maybe just clarifying what, what that is. Um, but I just noted that it wasn't added. So thought I'd bring it up. Um. This is chapter nine. So um, nine point one point five, public notification, the very last sentence of um, A, where it says basic notice, minimum standards for notice of all meetings and hearings. The last sentence says um, city staff shall approve at a minimum seven calendar days of notice. So I'm not opposed to that, but I'm just asking for clarification sake because the way that I understand this language is, is that while state law requires a minimum of twenty-four hours written notice, in absence of a special notice requirement, city staff shall provide a minimum of seven days calendar notice. So does that mean that all of the agendas will be published seven days prior? If so, I think that's great. I'm just wondering if that's actually feasible.
That was what the planning commission wanted to do.
Okay. Cool. Well.
Uh, again, to the transparency.
And we can, staff can do that.
Uh, we're doing it now, now this week because we just met on Monday. We're making the changes to chapter five. So I think that package is a day off, but you know, it will, we've been, we've been sending everything out a week at a time.
Okay. Um. Page two sixty-two, um, nine point one point six, decision based on public hearing. So now it says this section is intentionally left blank. It used to read a decision shall be made by the appropriate review body within sixty days of the close of the required public hearing. I'm not sure what the justification of removing that entirely is and leaving that portion blank, but.
Um, I think that's the concern of uh, when we have projects that get tabled, like we have a lot of projects that get tabled. Um, and they don't come back because the applicant doesn't make revisions um, that uh, you know, we wanted to make sure we're not giving any kind of in, implied like approval um, with those projects, right? Um, because it, it happens at least five or six times a year, right? So um, you know, Phil might come with his hotel project, right? And then it gets tabled and then they never really resubmit. And maybe when they do it, six months later and that they had the, the council, the planning commission is not going to take any action on it. But if we have some section in the code that says after two months, that's a problem and that's why we took, took that out. Just because our code, as you know, has a lot of standards and it's sometimes difficult for people to.
And it's better to just delete that altogether opposed to adding language that was required to come back?
That was the feeling. Well, I mean, they have to come back if they want to get approved, right? So.
Right.
Instead of just giving them, out an approval every time they get tabled. So that's, that's just really hard for us to.
Okay, gotcha. Um, and then uh, page two sixty-three, um, complete application required. The administrator shall have, um, it used to say five working days and now it says fourteen business days to review the application. I would imagine that the justification is to provide staff more time because five days may not be enough.
Yeah, um, I, I think one of the changes just procedurally or not by code has been that we're doing a full review on every project bef, to the applicant before it goes to a hearing. And so it's hard to do a full review on a project um, with the complexity of our code in, in like three days, you know, four and three or four days and have it in the code that if, if you were really astute developer, like if you were a developer, you would probably have read that. Although most of our developers have not read that. Um, then they can say, hey, we're approved and we haven't even had the time because I'm in HRB and work session and, you know, but and we're doing a fourteen-day, you know, kind of, or ten-day um, you know, procedurally, right? Not per code um.
Okay.
Review process, so.
The idea is to give owners more time. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so the chart, uh, nine to one point three, application requirements. So now it says see administrator, see code section seven point five subdivision and site plan standards. My personal preference is, is I would rather this chart be as it was formatted previously because it shows what um, what is required for the pre-application process and the sketch plan. And instead of referring back to the written portion of the code, you could see an image of a chart that shows you what's required or what may be required. So I don't think that that's too big of a change here to keep the same old format and then just adjust any changes that we made.
Yeah, I mean, that definitely came up and the old format was in a uh, old program. Um, when they did the code that couldn't really be revised and it was just became very unwieldy. Um, does that?
Is there not a format that's, that's a chart that basically could show that in a picture opposed to referring?
I, I mean, it would be a very large matrix because now the, if you didn't notice, all of those requirements are now voluminous essentially, right?
So how did we change the chart on the other uh, table where we added the squares?
All those are not, I mean, I, I think what you're asking is like all the things that are required. Now there's a ton of stuff that's required and, and to put that in a chart was just, it seemed.
So you could add, you could add squares and fill them in, but you can't take them away?
Well, no, I mean, it's just the amount of stuff that would have to go into a chart just seemed, it just, it didn't seem worth, I think, the, if, if, if it's what I'm thinking you're talking about.
Okay, um, well, look at.
Going so quickly, I, I don't, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head.
No, I, no, I get that. And so I'll, I'll tell you, it's page two sixty-five and I think um, it's going to be pertinent for me to try to pass some of this on maybe in written or something. So you could look at it. I understand it's hard when you don't have it in front of you, but um, two sixty-five, this table, if there was a way to, to keep it formatted to where there was a picture version of what was required for a pre-application, sketch plan, final plat, traffic impact analysis, opposed to just saying refer to this portion of the code.
Yeah, and I, I think we did have that. That's, that is what I, you know, um, that discussion. And it's just because there's so much additional stuff to put that in a chart for each process. Was the chart was going to be as, it was going to be a very, very large chart that would cover a few pages. So it might not be useful to anyone. That, that's the reason why.
Okay.
So.
Um.
Yeah.
Uh, now on chart, uh, on page two sixty-six, that permit type chart, um, what used to be exempt is now required compliance and that is a ZBOA special exemption is now required for a pre-application conference. It's required for a sketch plan. It's required for site plan. Um, the ZBOA variance is now required for pre-application conference, sketch plan, site plan, um, buildings and elevations. So a, and text and map amendments. So where there was nothing where it was exempt prior, um, again, that's just a pretty big change that's now reflected in this chart that wasn't um, previously.
And to explain that, you know, I, I think especially under the former planning director, you know, if you wanted to go on an agenda without any review of your project, you were being placed on an agenda with the planning commissioner as EBOA without any review and that was not working well. I think you can go back to the minutes because uh, peo, people didn't know what they were, what the planning commissioner staff expected and you know, they would basically then be stretched out over numerous meetings and, you know, their costs for engineers, architects, et cetera, became extremely expensive or they just got turned down.
Okay.
Um, and, and so, you know, I, I think our goal is uh, to provide everything. We want to meet upfront to make sure you're going to meet the code and set expectations before you go to a hearing. That's the change, right? Instead of just having you go to a hearing without any, without any assistance, without any, you know, just even discussion with, with anyone about even what are the expectations? And that, that just doesn't work. I'm just going to be honest. It just does not work in today's.
Gotcha. Okay. Um. Uh, question for clarification on page two sixty-nine, processes and approvals. This is talking about large projects and the pre-application procedure for large projects shows no public notification, none required? Is there a difference in large projects and say a major development? Because when I, without having any experience in this, just looking at it, when I see a large project or larger projects as it says here, and then I see public notification, none required, I thought the idea of some of these changes.
Large project, can you uh?
Yeah, so the process.
Whole packet back there.
Process and approval, it says uh, nine point five two, process and approval. And then there's a, basically a chart that shows what's required and it, it says pre-application procedure for large projects, a pre-construction meeting may be required.
Pre-construction meeting, okay, yeah. I mean, pre-construction meeting is, has already been approved essentially. Yeah.
So there's already been a public notice that was sent out, a public hearing. Thank you, Nate. So this is just for the, the building permit after the project has been through the planning commission?
That's right, that's right. And we tri, we typically have pre-construction meetings. So that, that, you know, we wouldn't notify the public for that. And uh, and, and you know, it's, it's, we try to have that meeting because we're trying to set expectations for site maintenance, stormwater, right, silt fences and you know, hours of operation, all that stuff for when they're building, um, you know, project, right? And just inspections, all the expectations. That's the, that's the goal for that.
Got it. Um, section nine point eight point one, development designer view, minor site plan. We had in there before, um, all structures having a ten thousand square foot or less building footprint. That was moved entirely and now it reads all buildings except single-family residential structures in development that contain five or fewer residential units. Um, I'm not sure what the thought process there is. I think that the ten thousand square foot footprint um, differentiated between minor and major well. So I'm not sure why we eliminated that, put all buildings except for single-family residential structures. Um, I think either way, we were having a public hearing.
I think that's again, um, you know, essentially the more transparency. So and before there was this cutout that if you were ten thousand square foot or less, it would be administrative, it would be a minor administrative approval. And, and now we're just.
This was to trigger that public hearing?
Trigger the, we're just saying, hey, if you're doing a commercial project, you're going to the planning commission, right?
Okay.
So there's no, you know, like the public's always going to be involved or notified.
Okay, gotcha. Um, and then.
And that's pretty typical in most communities, they.
Right. Uh, I would look at this too on page two seventy-four. It says uh, permit validity upon approval of the minor development design application. The applicant shall have one year to obtain a building permit. Um, it looked like it was twenty-four months on that chart on two fifty-nine. So I would just make sure that that's consistent.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, that, that really should be twenty-four months and then we'll one-year um, extension.
Uh, on page two eighty, um, lowercase i times three. So consistency in adopted plans, it said the proposed development is in general conformity with the city's comprehensive plan, civic master plan and other plans officially adopted by the city. And then for guidance, standards, maintenance and consistency policies, the last bullet point says, and special area policy is adopted by the HRB. So is this to, is this to read that the HRB can adopt policies or plans that maybe the city hasn't adopted to then govern um, that body's?
I, I'm pretty sure that was actually in the original code and we just didn't change it, but actually you probably should remove it.
Uh, okay, I, yeah.
However, the Northwest Quadrant is a specific, you know, um, district, but you know, I don't think that was actually done by the HRB. It was really done by council, so.
Right. And I think if we're going to have it to where uh, consistency with adopted plans needs to be at the city level, I think that needs to be consistent across the board. So maybe we strike that and um, clear that confusion. And um, I, let's see.
You're doing impressive jobs, Scott.
Thank you. I got this last night.
You really, you know, a great attorney, like uh.
No, I didn't sleep. Um, oh, question for you in the minutes. This is uh, something that was brought up by Mrs. McFann, suggested sending a letter to the utility companies to ask um, them about the changes regarding the code and the utility easement standards. Um, you said you were going to send a letter. Did you send that?
I did talk to their development engineer, yeah.
Okay.
More of an email.
So we cleared up any concerns that may have existed between the utility companies and the changes that we're making here?
Well, I think what happened is what we were going with, um, I think they just, what we were going with was maybe too much and, and, and we basically watered it down. So it wouldn't be.
And that's reflected here in this first. Okay, got it. Um, and I was a little bit confused by this one. This is in regards to the traffic impact analysis. It says Mrs. McFann feels the information, the PC request of the applicants is a lot inexpensive, but big developers is different, need a balance. Mr. Trash referred to Salem Bay. Commission agreed this section needs to be revised. Is that to say that the traffic impact analysis section of the development code needs to be revised? Because that was just part of the re, revision, right?
Um, I think that's when they were having the discussion, that traffic impact section, all that table, all that stuff is all new. It's all of that is all new. And so uh.
All of that was coming from?
Um, I think that conversation, I think there were
Okay.
questions that uh, a few of those projects didn't really do a full TIA or a TIA or uh, I think that was the preface to the conversation, um, if I remember correctly.
Well, I, my, my concern again is the fact that there was this mishap with the redlining because here now, if, if the public were to review this and not know the magnitude of the changes made, then we would stamp off on this to move to second reading and then really they would only have the second reading to see what those changes were and not two full public hearings, right?
Well, I would, I would say that we've had so many hearings on this that have been open to the public that there's been so many opportunities and, and public has been part of every single meeting. Like there's been a few members of the public every single meeting.
Right. Okay.
So, and as you can see, you have, I mean, hundreds of pages of minutes.
Yeah.
So uh, yeah, and, and again, that you basically just got Ben's track cha, you know, again, a small sappho on my part. You know, I, I didn't catch it until, until I think you met and stated it this afternoon. So uh, I apologize.
Um, that is, that's all I have on that.
The only thing I wanted to add to it and, and kind of taken off what Josh had said is in the future for our benefit, when, instead of giving us a ream of paper like that, I, I appreciate the redlining, but I'd also like a little summary in the beginning saying, these are the major changes and this is where they're located in the code. So we can go back and review them. It just makes it simpler for us.
Yeah, sure. I think I had a memo, but it was to, to go over all of them. It would have been uh,
Okay.
It probably would have been thirty pages long, like uh, and so I just tried to highlight just the major ones, but uh.
It makes it easier.
It's a, it's a lot. I would agree. Yeah.
I appreciate it. Well, anyone else?
I've got like three or four changes that I don't think you covered, but they're mostly clerical. So I'm just going to give them to you.
Okay.
Afterwards, and you can confirm for me whether or not my questions are of concern, if they do qualify to what I've questioned or otherwise, so that by second reading, it can either be correct in here or you can tell me why it's not. Okay.
Mike, Josh missed something? Josh missed something?
Yeah, he didn't catch those. Or he didn't say, he, he may not have missed them, but he didn't say anything about it.
Let me get my calendar.
They're more clerical. A lot of them are more.
I gotta mark it on my calendar here.
Recognize, Councilman. Now you want to speak.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to thank Kurt and the staff. This is a lot to digest. And I just want to thank uh, that we have someone like uh, Josh on staff that, with his level of detail. But um, I, I also would like to echo what Phil said. Um, maybe, maybe something more in a general sense that would allow us from our level to get the macro picture of what we need to address would be appreciated.
Okay.
So, long story short, just want to thank you and the planning commission for all the hard work that you've done. Thank you.
Definitely.
Any other discussion? If not, we're going to call a question, I guess. Um, all in favor of first reading? On the ordinance amending chapter seven, land development, chapter nine, development review procedures of the Buford Development Code. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Thank you, Kurt. Okay, next is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for the city of Buford for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six to provide for execution of and to put into effect the consolidated budget to provide budgetary control of the city's fiscal affairs. I have a motion.
Second.
Okay. When I open a public hearing. Okay, when I open a public hearing, F and all that, Scott or Alan?
Did you call a public hearing already?
Mm-hmm.
We had a motion, a second, and an open and a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I will apologize ahead of time for my voice, which seems to be going out on me this evening. But good evening to you and good evening to members of the public. The fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget presented this evening for your consideration for first reading is a culmination of effort between yourselves, the city manager's office, the finance department, and other city department directors. What we will share with you this evening is a draft of the F Y twenty-six consolidated budget, which is made up of our eight various funds. General Fund, Parks and Tourism Fund, State Accommodations Fund, Fire Impact Fund, Stormwater Fund, Capital Projects Fund, T F two fund, and our ARPA fund. I have written you a fairly, what I think is an eloquent message explaining the budget, I will not read that verbatim, but I will move forward to presenting the budget to you. The F Y twenty-six consolidated budget from all funds totals seventy-three point one million dollars. It represents a nearly seven point five million dollar increase from our fiscal year twenty twenty-five original budget, and nearly two million dollar increase over the fiscal year twenty twenty-five revised budget. You may recall from last year's budget presentation that the F Y twenty-five original budget was stated as fifty-five point seven million dollars. However, in the process of making the city's budget more easily understandable, the method of presentation has been changed to more transparently present all revenues and expenditures to provide confidence that these two amounts match, that you are getting a balanced budget. Previously, transfers from existing funds were not immediately counted as revenue for the purpose of budget presentation. These funds are now reflected in the F Y twenty-six budget as revenue. Alan will break this down a little bit more finitely for you in his presentation when he compares last year's budget as it was presented with this year's budget. Staff is proposing that the overall millage rate for this year's budget remain flat at seventy-three point nine mills. The value of a mill this year is one hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars, which represents an increase per mill of five thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars over F Y twenty-five's mill rate of one hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars. The increase in the mill rate can be positively correlated to an increase in the number and value of improved properties on the tax rolls. While operating expenses have continued to increase, fortunately, revenue increases have absorbed much of that blow. Specifically in the general fund, we are projecting a one point one five million dollar increase in business license revenue and a three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollar increase in property tax revenue. Our solid waste contract due to a C P I escalator clause will increase by seventy-five thousand dollars this year. However, the line item on residents' tax bills will remain will remain flat at two hundred seventy dollars because we have absorbed this additional cost within existing millage revenues. While a budget of seventy-three million dollars is a lot for a city of this size, nearly twenty-eight and a half million dollars of it is in our capital projects fund and consists of previously budgeted and still unspent funds. Much of these funds are in the form of grant dollars. We have also budgeted one hundred thousand dollars for our housing repair assistance program. The agreement between the city and Beaufort Housing, Beaufort Desper Housing Trust has been fully ratified, and we are working through implementation details together on this program. We are currently winding down a classification and compensation study, and while we do not yet have the final report, we do know that the Consumer Price Index increased exactly three percent from January twenty twenty-four to January twenty twenty-five. So instead of waiting on the results of the study, we are requesting a three percent cost of living adjustment across the board for our employees to be implemented at the beginning of the fiscal year in July. We're also setting aside the equivalent of a two point seven percent across-the-board increase for use as needed to implement an action plan in response to the Classification and Compensation Study Final Report Recommendations. Over the last several years, employees have been subject to a merit increase of up to two percent based on performance. Because of anticipated compensation increases in wake of the study, merit increases this year will be replaced by one-time merit bonuses of up to two point five percent. Our health insurance provider has informed us that we can expect a nine percent increase to our healthcare coverage for employees. A nine percent increase represents an overall cost increase of approximately one hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. We have absorbed this increase in our operating costs and are not proposing to pass it on to the employees. This is the right thing to do for our employees, and it helps keep us competitive in the labor market. This slide represents the amounts we are including in this year's budget for strategic partner assistance. The amounts indicated are recommended amounts and are not necessarily reflective in all cases of the amounts that were requested by the organizations. Beaufort County Economic Development Corp, we're proposing a forty-two thousand dollar allotment. All but a breeze, twenty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars, which is our local match to a northern Beaufort Regional Transit Study that's being conducted. One hundred thousand dollars for the Beaufort Digital Quarter, fifteen thousand dollars for the Military Enhancement Committee, four hundred seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is our thirty percent share that is directed to us by statute of our state A tax revenues. South Carolina Nurse Initiative, five thousand dollars in the South Coast Cyber Center, forty-five thousand dollars. In an effort to avoid surprise and to allow for proper discussion, I think it's important to highlight for you those items and characteristics of the budget that are not that are new or different than what you were accustomed to seeing. Earlier, I briefly explained that the format of the budget this year is improved and represents a truer number representative of revenues and expenses, the only two essential elements of any budget. In the F Y twenty-six budget, we are establishing one new position through the transfer of one full-time equivalent position. We are converting an empty position in the Community Development Office to a fire inspector position in the fire department to be activated in the second half of the year, prorated for six months. While we routinely compensate employees in the form of vacation and retirement payouts, we have not previously budgeted for these expenses. This year, we have included these expenses in our budget projections. We also would like to amend the fee schedule to reflect a nominal increase to the rate for off-duty fire and police personnel in support of events. We are proposing that the police rate go from sixty to sixty-five dollars per hour, and that the fire rate go from thirty-eight dollars to fifty dollars an hour. We've added a line item to the budget for contingency boat removal and or disaster mitigation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. You'll also note that in this year's proposed budget, the release of some T F two fund balance for various capital needs within the T F two district. And lastly, we will include as part and parcel to the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget an unfunded requirements list to identify valid requirements we are not able to fund in this budget. The next formal step for the budget approval beyond tonight is second and final reading at the June ten meeting of city council. However, at the mayor's request, we have tentatively scheduled a special work session next week on May twentieth at five P M in the event it is necessary following first reading this evening. You may also note that the budget presented for first reading this evening is not identical to the budget presented at the April twenty-two budget work session. Alan will walk you through the modifications made as a result of council feedback received during that work session.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just to highlight some of the changes that we made since the April twenty-second work session meeting, we did remove the vehicle tag fee of two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and we were able to move some expenses from the general fund to the state accommodation tax fund for the police utility task vehicle of eighteen thousand dollars, and also thirteen thousand dollars of the general fund portion for the police mobile command travel trailer was moved to state A tax fund. And also, the city housing repair program was in the general fund, we moved it to the ARPA fund. We have a remaining balance of lower ninety-five thousand dollars from Beaufort County's ARPA portion, this is this, the Good Neighbor Program we had with them, so we're using that remaining balance plus a little bit of of interest earned from ARPA to still have the hundred thousand dollars shown in that program. And following the remaining balance of about a hundred thousand dollars will come from our release of committed fund balance for vehicles and equipment. So those are the changes that we made for that, and then a couple more changes that we made as well that we did mention during the April twenty-ninth work session meeting was the police department is purchasing nine additional radios for seventy-five thousand dollars. This was originally included in their lease vehicle request, but those vehicles went from fifteen down to six. So rather than paying through the lease program, we had to purchase them outright to be compliant as a twenty twenty-seven for the radios. So half of that's be funded through the general fund, and half of that be funded through the Parks and Tourism Fund. And then also meet with the police chief, she would like to to replace one of patrol vehicles with the one admin vehicle. So there's a little bit of cost savings in that request, and then our, we got final numbers from our health insurance premiums. We budgeted twelve percent increase, they came down to nine percent, so we reflected that savings about forty-nine thousand dollars in our budget. And then also, we removed the new F T E for the Emergency Risk Manager position in our budget, that was within the city manager department. Salary to benefits was a little over ninety thousand dollars. We use that money, still kept it within the budget, but we allocate that money to the city's compensation study within the the general fund, that's how you see the additional point seven percent that we have in there. And then also added the, or re-added the Freedom of Information Act fee schedule, in the past, we've never had a full year fee schedule, so added that as well. And as city manager mentioned, we have improved budget presentation format and include all revenues, all expenses, transferred in and releasing fund balance are included under revenues, and transfers out and contribution to fund balance are under expenditures. But this, this is what was presented or approved in fiscal twenty-five, as far as our original, our budget was fifty-five point six million. And this shows it in the new format of a little over sixty-five million. A lot easier to see the ins and outs, and this is what we have included now, our recommended budget of seventy-three point one million. Broken down by the various funds and using fund balance for some of that as well. This was just kind of high level, the the revenue sources by funds, and then the expenditures as well. This shows our overall revenues for across all funds. This, some of the the revenue budget highlights, still keeping millage rate flat at seventy-three point nine mills. Increase for business licenses of one point one five million. We also included a purchase of a fire truck in this budget, it's over one point one million. We're using, we're going to borrow a, use a capital lease to borrow eight hundred thirty-three thousand dollars of that, and then use committed fund balance of two hundred eighty-one thousand for the remaining balance, which ties back to a previous fire truck that we sold, and now we're using the proceeds for a new fire truck. And then follow, we're going to increase police and fire off-duty rates just to make sure that we're still covering our expenses for both personnel and benefits. And here is on the expenditure side, broken down by a fund. We'll go into a little more detail as we go through each fund. But overall, this is one new position, but it's more a transfer coming out of the community development department into the fire department for the fire inspector. We include the three percent COLA, the two point seven percent increase for the compensation study, and then the two point five percent merit bonus as well. And then we've kind of mentioned about the health insurance premiums, and then we also have employee retention programs, and overall, you'll see the increase about seven point two percent for salaries and benefits. Operations are at twelve point two million, we'll go a little more detail for that. Capitals or capital needs, most, some of that we're using fund balance for that, and then our debt, any of our debt obligations that we need for the fire truck, the the debt payment won't begin until fiscal year twenty-seven. And then this is for the general fund, just the overall revenues, we'll see pretty aligned with what we had back in April twenty-second, but some of the changes. Now we're taking out the the tax fees, that's taken out of the charges for services line item for that, that's showing just a small increase now. And property taxes, see slight increases with growth and some new new development, new properties coming along. I know we've mentioned this before, so this is, we'll go to some of this detail, but this is property taxes are made up a little over about third of our total revenues within our general fund. We're still keeping the overall mileage the same, we are decreasing the debt mill by one mill and increasing the operating mill by one mill, but overall, it's still staying the same. And then significant revenues, we mentioned about the business license increases, and then that's all set by two hundred thousand dollar decrease for building permits. And then the issuance of the capital lease for the fire truck as well. This is overall the expenditures for the general fund. I won't go into a lot of this detail, we've mentioned this before, for increases from both the April twenty-second, April twenty-ninth meetings, as far as each department requesting additional items or some of the changes. Overall, for this slide, we did notice we do still have the emergency risk manager on this, I forgot to take that portion out, but that's that's not included, just the fire inspector position is included in the budget. Now we'll go into Parks and Tourism Fund, see kind of the the revenue side. As far as that goes, this is tied to a lot of the local hospitality and accommodation taxes. This is broken down by each east department as well, we've kind of mentioned some of these changes as well, but anything sticks out, definitely let us know. Stormwater fund, we're still keeping the stormwater utility fees flat, still keeping those the same. And then we're using some of our remaining stormwater bond funds for the Bay Area Street Drainage Project. Fire impact fees, we're collecting the revenue and then keeping that and and fund balance for additional expenses in the future. State Accommodation Tax Fund, this is some of the changes we made, some of the capital of thirty-one thousand is some of those P D items were moved into state A tax. And then we did also, we did reduce some of the tourism grants available, they still have an increase from previous year, but we took some of that, lowered that amount a little bit, just to show that budget within this fund. And they're also using some of the fund balance for the arsenal walls and windows project. Here's the ARPA fund, showing this is where the hundred thousand dollars is going to be included now in the ARPA fund. And then we got some drainage projects we're using ARPA funds for as well. And T F two funds, we're using T F two funds for some of our our capital needs as well. You can see that that breakdown, everything is within the T F two district. And overall, salaries increased over nine hundred sixty-one thousand or seven point four percent. And benefits with the changes to the health insurance increased three hundred sixty thousand or six point six percent. F T Es remain the same because that transfer took place between community development and fire department. And the capital project fund, most of these projects are own going projects, that we will do that. Jay John, if you want to speak, just a little bit on on our projects, just a high level.
Counselors, we discussed in previous work sessions, we only have a few new projects this year, the majority of this is carryover. And I will remind counsel that we do have a special work session on the twenty-seventh where we're going to be doing deep dives into these, these projects. The new projects that we had identified for this year. That we had identified for this year. Are here the Washington Street Park Phase Two Construction. South Side Park Phase Two, the Waterfront Park Relieving Platform, continuing that work. Moving from the Carnegie Building exterior to the interior, which is where we broke that project down into two parts. The Arsenal Walls Rehabilitation, the Arsenal Windows. And Depot Road is a county project, Marina Fuel Tanks is a carryover from last year. And that's the Police Department Building Upfit Uplift, that was the other part, and that's finishing the second story of the Police Department. It's going to require some architecture engineering review because the gym, the weight that's on the gym being on the second floor. But finishing that out so that the Police Department has adequate office space and that that building is completed. Does counsel have any questions about that, or is we'll hold those till the end?
What I'd like to do, if we could, is we're having this special meeting next Tuesday on the twentieth. If anybody's got any questions, if we want to hold off until then and get clarification. Go before second reading gives them time to get changes, whatever we do, or we can do it now.
I can hold.
I I've got.
I can ask at least one.
Okay, sure.
Go ahead.
And this is for Alan. On page thirty where it says recommend maintaining the two reserve mill and include an operating mill to continue to fund for aging infrastructure. Do you know off top how much we have in that bucket of money, and then if we've spent any of that on on anything that you could put your finger on?
Yeah, top of my head, I think it's, I think it's grown to about one point two million dollars, I want to say. I know we haven't haven't touched those funds yet. Those have still kind of remained there just to use just in case, but.
And then the only reason I bring that up is because I I still struggle with some of the expenditures that we're using the TIF two funds for. I think that we're we're doing that just because there's this phantom fear of potentially losing those, and I don't argue that we need to spend them. I just would rather those be either spent on transportation or go back to the, there was the redevelopment commission. That was established and reviewed what those funds could be spent on back in whatever it was, two thousand and fifteen, when they were doing Boundary Street. But if we have a mill that's set aside for aging infrastructure, I don't know why we're using TIF two funds. When we have one point two million that was originally collected to do exactly some of these maintenance repairs that we're doing on on buildings. But either way it goes, I I didn't know how much we had in, you know, what we had spent it on, but that's, that's why I ask.
Yeah, and that's within the general fund as well, that's where those those funds are right now.
And I'll save everything else for.
Okay, yeah, I've got some questions too, so.
So we'll just wait.
Everybody okay, good with that?
Yeah, if you mind, let's just kind of go through this last part, just, this is the kind of new addition for the budget, this unfunded requirements list, so. Just to kind of list that these are personal requests that we weren't able to include in the budget right now. So you'll see at the top, we have the emergency risk manager position. And then the the Police Department would like to have a community response team, so that includes a sergeant and then two patrol, three officers. And then downtown operations as administrative assistant.
So are these additional FTEs as compared to the budget?
Yeah, these are, yeah, these are requests, and these are not included in the budget, we want to kind of start compiling a list of.
So our our FTE numbers that are currently on Police Department would be increased by three?
No, this is, we're not including these.
No, 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 I mean, if.
If we have.
If we have these.
If we could afford them.
Yeah.
These are, these are the things that we have designated that we need, but.
Right, I understand.
This is on the the capital equipment size, is some of the capital needs that were identified from the department request, but not included. So we got some apartment from, items from the fire department and then Police Department. Those items there, and then finally just for the capital projects. The pitch point drainage study, we lost the FEMA grant associated with that, and the Commonwealth Street Drainage Project, the the cost has gone up pretty significantly. So we're not able to fund that project for construction at this time. Yeah, if you have any.
So with the priorities done, I know those are unfunded priorities, and so we're just kind of compiling a list. But I did note that some of these are not included in the priority, the priorities that we went over back in December, November, when we had the ARPA funds. A lot of those, I think, we funded, but there's some that I know that we, when we reprioritized back then, we moved up to closer to the front. One of them was the generator hookup for Public Works. I don't know if you guys got that or not, I know that was like thirty thousand dollars. But a lot of these priorities that are on this list are not, or were not reflected back in November when we had a a list of priorities.
Right, yeah, some of them have been included in this fiscal year budget, believe the generate one has. I can verify to make sure, I know like the Public Works HVAC is included as long, as well as the IT HVAC unit as well. I know those reason TIF two funds for those, or those higher priority audience, we made sure, see if we include in this year's budget.
You said TIF two was being used for HVAC?
Yeah, that, because it's at the public works complex.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
Councilman, also, when we prioritize expenditures for the ARPA funds, we did not include any recurring costs. And if you note, a lot of these identified items are recurring costs for personnel, so we consider one time expenses only for ARPA funds.
Okay, that makes sense.
Isn't it also true that when we did that priority, we hadn't had some of these grants pulled either?
That's absolutely true.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience want to comment? Are you done, Alan, you got more?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak? Now I'm gonna close. Public hearing. All right, back to the question, all in favor of an ordinance provide a levy for taxes for the city of Beaufort for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six?
Can I make one more comment, Mayor? And, and this is just because we had a pretty lengthy discussion on the flat raise versus the three percent, and I know this is calling for three percent. Scott, I reviewed everything that you sent over to us, you had the the salaries, that was helpful. The the draft version of the, I know the study's not done yet. I advocated pretty hard, and I still do, for the flat raise. One reason is because even the data that we got in this most recent study is not going to reflect the fact that our neighbors are doing a flat raise around us. And so for the sake of remaining competitive, I would still advocate in that direction. However, because I did, in this case, I don't want to make a motion to change what you have here. But what I would ask is that if in the event that the consensus of council is to move forward with the three percent as you have it in here. I really would like to see in between now and maybe second reading, how we could factor in the longevity incentive. Just playing with some of those numbers, it looked like it would maybe be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars ish if we took the same breakdown that they provided in that study. And I think it would be a way for us to reward some of the employees that we have that have been with us for a long time, but maybe haven't, you know. Aren't aren't making salary enough to to support life here, and that's another thing that really wasn't reflected in that study is is the cost of living. And how expensive things are here. So in the event that we move forward with how you have it laid out, I would like to advocate that we try to factor in that long longevity incentive.
The the only comment I would have that councilman is that the the preliminary report that you've seen is only a draft. And it may change before the final report is rendered. But we will have to pass a budget before that happens. And so we will have to make some decisions, knowing that we will have to make some adjustments later. Based on the recommendations of the report and the plan that we choose to adopt to implement those recommendations.
Okay, let's go back to the question, all in favor of. First reading on the ordinance to provide levy for taxes for city of Beaufort for fiscal year, July, fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty five, ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it. Thank you, Alan. Okay, next item is a request for cosponsorship of Title Creek Fellowship Night of Worship in Wednesday, June twenty five, twenty twenty five, from three P M to nine P M. And a waiver for loud and unseemly noise for amplified music, there will be a worship band, no alcohol and food will be served.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take motion in a second. Go ahead, Jennifer.
How are you? Well, first, thanks Tracy for adding this on last minute because this was late, and thank you for the patience of our guests here today. So they've been patiently sitting here waiting for this, so if you have any questions, they're doing, could do a worship at Waterfront Park. They are actually asking to have it moved from one to nine, their their event would be from six to eight. They want a little bit more time to set up. So they want to come in at one to set up and then have their event from six to eight, it'll be lawn chairs be brought in, no food or beverages we sold, so.
It'll be six days of the actual.
Yeah, actual event would not change, they'd be out by nine before dark because that way they don't have to pay for lighting. So, maybe any questions, I do have Madison and Pastor Kyle here, if you have any questions.
How loud would the amplified music be, I mean, will it carry all over the whole park? Because we've got some neighbors there that, you know, live in the Whitehall area.
It's what, it's it's Waterfront.
It's Waterfront, I'm sorry, I got mixed up, thought it was Whitehall.
Yeah, Whitehall's next one.
Yeah, that's the graduation party.
Oh, okay, that's the one I was thinking of, okay. Anybody have any? Okay, all in favor, signal I was saying aye? Thank you, aye. Appreciate it, y'all want to say anything?
Thank you guys for your patience.
Yeah, I mean, you sat here for the whole time, you must.
Just want to say, Mayor, Councilman, thank you all so much, appreciate this, and, yeah.
Hope it's a great event.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
Would you like to take the mosquito with you?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to take?
And again, just thank you so much for last minute putting it in.
Yes.
And if y'all aren't busy on June twenty fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next is a request for use of Olive Water Whitehall Park on Sunday, June first, twenty twenty five, from four to eight P M. Request waiver for loud and unseemly noise to host a graduation party.
So that that's now at Whitehall, so that when they're gonna have a DJ, they'll be done by seven thirty. I have been purposely not, basically selling Whitehall after dark since it is a dawn to dusk event. So we have a representative, it's a graduation drop in, drop out sandwiches, private just for graduation, but he's mostly using the pavilion, but they'd be coming out, but if any questions, I have.
Before we do that, we gotta have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Moving, moving, Sam.
Second.
Okay, all right, now any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Ask about decimal levels, so.
Oh, yeah, there's not gonna, it's just a small DJ, it's, he's got like two small speakers, gonna do like some shag music and stuff like.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yes.
All right, any other comments?
One more time, how late is this could be?
And it's seven thirty P M.
Okay.
Still daylight, it's good.
Yes, I would try to get in and out of Whitehall.
Yeah, there will be.
And we've asked for the base not to be too deep as well.
Okay.
Is it a specific school organization?
It's with cross community churches, the seniors, about six of them are all graduating, and they just were, instead of different parties, they're just doing one altogether.
Oh, makes sense, that's good. Okay, all in favor, signal I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any none, it passes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for sitting and waiting around for it. Okay, next is a resolution in support of the childcare and early learning demonstration project. Scott?
Move accept.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Hello again, Mayor and Councilman. One of the issues that the Soloco Regional Board has chosen to take on is affordable childcare to allow parents to return to work. And they have looked far and wide, and and they have a great person in charge of this effort for them. And one possible solution that's been identified is a program that has been successful in the state of Michigan, and it's called a tri-share program. It covers the cost of childcare equally between an employer, the employee, and the state. And the key characteristics of this program in Michigan are, it's innovative, it's a public private partnership, it's the first of its kind in the country, it had bipartisan support. And it increased labor participation, helps to sustain employment and fosters economic security. The resolution before you requests that the Beaufort County Legislative Delegation and the Jasper County Legislative Delegation. Undertake steps necessary to enable, fund, and ensure that the South Carolina Department of Social Services, with the support of the Department of Commerce and the Department of Education. Will establish and conduct a childcare demonstration project utilizing that tri-share model that has been successful in the state of Michigan.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm in favor of support of that, so I'll call the question, all in favor, signal I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, now as a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus, Inc. for the purchase of an enforcer PUC pumper.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Councilor, or good night, I don't.
Have a motion first, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now.
Thank you, yeah, this is for the city manager to enter into a contract to purchase our next fire truck due up for replacement. We'll be retiring a two thousand and seven model due for replacement or retired in in twenty twenty seven. We have to get in line now, fire trucks take about three years to to be produced, so this will be a twenty twenty eight model. This will complete our cycle for our fleet for the decade, we'll have a twenty one model, a twenty three, a twenty five, and a twenty eight. That will be part of our ten year frontline service and then our twenty year second line service, so this will complete that cycle for fire truck replacement for us.
Okay, any questions, comments? Only comment I have is I learned more about a pumper than I wish to know.
There's a lot, a lot of details on paper, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, all in favor, signal I was saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think they go to all this criteria information just to justify a two million, one and a half million dollar price.
And this price is still good, Chief?
Yes, the price is good, that's one of the reasons we we wanted to lock in, it says May, they knew we were having a meeting tonight, so.
Okay.
If we if we approved it tonight, city manager can enter the contract tomorrow, so they're holding the price for that.
Got you for us, yes.
I'll make sure I sign it right right away. Okay, next is the one point one hospitality tax fund recommendations. Alan, you want to?
Move accept.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
All right, so our city Beaufort ordinance stipulates that one point one percent will be available through appropriation for advertising. To increase tourism and revitalization of the downtown economy. And I've got, goes kind of through the process, we did a solicitation in our newspaper and posted on our website, and we received five proposals. By the submission date of April seventeenth. They, this proposals were from Beaufort Area Hospitality Association for thirty thousand dollars. The Freedmen's Arts District for forty eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. The Original Gullah Festival for ten thousand, the Gullible Gullah Traveling Theater for ten thousand. And the Habitat for Humanity for sixteen hundred, for a total request amount of over a hundred thousand dollars. Now, the the budget was only thirty one thousand nine hundred. And the staff committee consisted of J J Survey, Linda Roper, and myself. We reviewed and rated the proposals based on the criteria stipulated in the ordinance and also here into city council's strategic goals. So our staff recommendations are as follows. For Beaufort Area Hospitality Association, they requested thirty thousand dollars to support and advertise to activate, elevate, and celebrate activities. And then these are events that attract consumers to the Beaufort Downtown Core District. They collaborate events and advertising campaigns with other hospitality related businesses, including scheduling of some events during non-peak seasons. The staff recommends that city council allocate twenty two thousand dollars for that. This is a thirteen thousand five hundred dollar increase from the prior year award, but that's also due because the Downtown Beaufort Merchants Association. Did not apply to this year's funds as they have ceased operations. The Original Gullah Festival requests to produce and advertise for Sunday's entertainment for the twenty twenty five Gullah Festival. This request supports tourism by giving attendees a compelling reason to stay in the Beaufort throughout the weekend, boosting hotel, restaurant, and retail traffic on a traditional lighter day. And staff recommends to city council, we allocate four thousand dollars for this event. The third, the Zagola Traveling Theater, they requested ten thousand dollars for the advertising for the twenty twenty five Seattle Christmas. This request will be used specifically to purchase target media replacements across multiple platforms and key direct drive markets throughout the southeast. Staff recommends four thousand dollars. And the Freedmen's Arts District requests funds to advertise the Paint the Town Gala event. Staff know that the amount requested of forty thousand seven hundred. Staff know that the amount requested of forty thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars is a total budget amount for the gala. Staff recommends city council allocate nineteen hundred dollars, which is about, which is part of the twenty three hundred dollars of advertising budget that they have shown. And then finally, the Habitat for Humanity requests fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred dollars to advertise for their Turkey Trot five K event. Staff does not recommend any award due to this event being held during early mornings of Thanksgiving and therefore not likely to attract any additional tourists. So that's staff recommendations to tell up to the thirty one thousand nine hundred. Happy answering questions you may have about our recommendations or requests.
Any comments?
For the.
Go ahead.
For the Turkey Trot, I know you ought to recommend any, is there any money we have that we can put some towards it or?
They could apply for state A tax funds as well in the fall and that could be something where they could could request funds as well.
I mean, this is most we have that we can award, right?
Yeah, we're we're kind of limited on the budget amount.
I would like see them get something, but okay.
I agree with staff's recommendations as they are.
I will only make a comment that I've worked the Turkey Trot a few years and there are out of town racers that come.
Yeah, they are.
So.
Yeah, it would cost all just a smaller event, just happens just for a couple hours.
Had a family member talked about coming in from Florida for it. So I mean, yes, they do bring people there.
But A tax, they can apply for it.
Right, yeah, they can, yeah, they can play. Offer.
Doesn't have as much restrictions as far as out of area, true.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signal I was saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Alan. Okay, now is a resolution providing directives to the Waterfront Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. J J?
I'm just gonna bring my computer up because it's lighter than the agenda packet. Council, several months ago, we started the process to begin the Waterfront Park Advisory Committee or Waterfront Advisory Committee. And at our last meeting, we you appointed the members to that committee. Prior to the first meeting, we've been putting together all the documents, the history that got us to where we are and to guide the committee's actions over the next few months leading into the fall of this year. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution with some directives to the committee. That doesn't mean the committee won't have find other things that they need to explore that as information comes back. Council may have other priorities that that we would want to add through future resolutions. But this is just to give them a framework in which to work over the next several months leading into the fall. I believe we gave an October first deadline for an initial report. And they may not have all of the information they need to provide a full report at that time, but we wanted to provide some sort of timeline to that process. The basic framework that staffs recommended is is five issues reviewing the engineering findings and options for repair and replacement of the relieving platform and seawall, evaluating park and marina operations and public access in light of potential federal and state grant obligations. Three, consider potential land use, public private partnerships and programming opportunities. Four, engage with community and key stakeholders. And five, report back with findings and recommendations within six months of adoption. The those five areas are broken down in the proposed resolution to section one, engineering evaluation, section two, marina operations and public access, section three, community and stakeholder engagement, and section five, reporting requirements. Does council have any questions about the resolution, how we got here, what the purpose is?
One question. Point five, report back with findings and recommendations within six months of adoption. I think that's fast, like you said, we may not have all the data there, but I guess I'll just point out, I don't know that October first would be six months. I think that'd just be five because we're halfway through May now, so if we meet for the first time in June, then it would just be five months, so.
When we first started working on this, the intention was the six months by the time it it got in front of council, we'd had that October first deadline in there, so it just didn't match up, but yes, sir, I understand.
We expect the McSweeney to have their report by at least August.
The one A report we are hoping to have back, they said late summer, so August first of September at the latest. In the meantime, the first meeting that that we plan to have will be to go over the history, how we got here, what these directives are, and then an executive session for them to meet with the city attorney regarding the pending litigation around Waterfront Park and Marina usage. And then from there, let them work to schedule meetings. They can go ahead and begin doing some public input, whatnot. I'm not sure what they'll ultimately decide, but again, we just wanted to give them some framework in which to work and some some time, key times that we can have them start checking in and making sure that we're making progress.
Okay, any other comments?
What have, do you have a date for the first meeting yet?
Yes, sir, on page six hundred and six of the packet, section five, reporting requirements. We've asked that they provide a formal written report on the directives to city council no later than October first of two thousand twenty five for review and discussion at the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty five city council work session.
No, when is your first meeting?
Oh, the first meeting, we will set that today. We wanted to make sure we had these directives from council and then we'll be working this week to schedule that.
And you're going to adjust those dates accordingly, right?
We can, yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signal I was saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, J J. Okay, next is appointment to boards, commissions and committees, building board of appeals, cultural district advisory board, historic district review board, planning commission, tourism development advisory committee and zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make motion to reappoint Bob Brigardis, Rob Montgomery and Jennifer Peterson to the building board of appeals for four year terms expiring on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty nine.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, signal I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Linda Jeffries as a representative for the Greater Beaufort Port Royal C V B and Bonnie Hargrove as a representative of U S C B Center for the Arts to the Cultural District Advisory Board. These are also for three year terms to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight.
Okay, all in favor, signal I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Rita Wilson to the Historic Beaufort Historic District Review Board for a three year term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signal I was saying aye.
Aye. Like to make a motion to reappoint Barb Ferrier to the Parks and Tree Advisory Committee for a three year term. We just might as well make that a thirty year term because she's been on there for thirty years, but anyway, for a three year term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight.
Got a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, signal I was saying aye.
Aye.
Love you, Barb, sorry. Like to make a motion to reappoint Mike Tomy to the Planning Commission for a three year term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight.
Second.
All in favor, signal I was saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vesanta Byers and Joanne Parish to the Tourism Development Advisory Committee for three year terms, both expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, signal I was saying aye.
Aye.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Patrick McMichael to the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three year term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signal I was saying aye.
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 Okay, that does it. Next, the reports, since we've already had a comment on non-agend items, does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make before we close? Hearing none, city managers report.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor and Council. Many thanks to the city staff, volunteers, council members and community partners who helped deliver another successful Taste of Beaufort. We continue to get positive feedback and that reflects this event's role as a community highlight and an economic driver, so thank you. Got some brags on the fire department here, so just bear with me. The city of Beaufort Town of Port Royal Fire Department has earned the Fire Safe South Carolina Community Designation for two thousand twenty five. It's a special recognition and I would like to expressly recognize Deputy Chief Mazan and our public education team for leading this effort. Did I say that right that time, Chief? I did, and he wasn't even here to hear it. Formal recognition for this will be given during the two thousand twenty five Fire Rescue Conference in Myrtle Beach on Friday, June thirteenth. Additionally, our fire department has achieved the prestigious I S O class one rating, which is the highest insurance rating possible. We are now one of four hundred ninety eight departments in the United States with this rating, one of only seventeen in the state of South Carolina and the only department in Beaufort County to earn this designation. This reflects top tier performance in emergency communication, fire operations, water supply and risk reduction. With this rating, property owners in Beaufort and Port Royal may benefit from reduced insurance premiums. The spring two thousand twenty five edition of the city's Beacon Newsletter looks great, doesn't it? Like it?
Yeah.
I do, I think Ashley did a great job. It is out and should be hitting mailboxes any day now. We also have some copies here at City Hall if you just want to stop by and get one. Congratulations to Councilman Josh Skolletti, Public Information Officer Ashley Brandon and firefighter advanced E M T Jason Kleiner on their recent graduation from Leadership Beaufort. The Police Department's Future Guardians Initiative Summer Camp will be held June twenty third through June twenty sixth from nine A M to four P M daily. This program is open to Beaufort County youth ages eleven to seventeen, but space is limited. The program includes crime scene investigation, patrol division exploration, leadership training and much, much more. The deadline to apply is May thirty first and interested applicants may contact Officer Matt Williams at N Williams at cityofbeaufort.org for an application. And congratulations goes out to firefighter David Fiera, who graduated from the South Carolina Fire Academy and was awarded the Order of the Maltese by his peers. This honor recognizes the recruit who best exemplifies the eight virtues represented by the Maltese Cross, which is a firefighter's badge of honor. The Police Department will host a blood drive the morning of June sixth and donors are encouraged to register in advance and schedule a time for donation at oneblood.org. This week marks National Police Week, which is a time to honor the service and sacrifice of our law enforcement personnel. So thank you, Chief, to you and all of your personnel. We thank the men and women of Beaufort Police Department for their dedication and protecting and service and serving our community. Next week, however, is National Public Works Week, Nate. So we will recognize the vital contributions of our public works professionals and I happen to think we have the best public works team anywhere. Our community thrives because of their work maintaining critical infrastructure and public spaces with care and commitment. Any questions?
Thank you, Scott. For the mayor's report, I just wanted to mention that I went to the T C L graduation very end there and stopped by the Marina Building where they did the mural and it looks wonderful. So got a chance to meet the artist and her family and it's pretty neat. Attended several meetings and I'm not going to detail all of them, so for the minutes, you know, I've just put down, I went to several meetings. Attended Leadership Day at Joseph F Shanklin Elementary School. Also went to the Taste of Beaufort. We had commerce, city of Chamber of Commerce, weather, a special thanks to all the staff and the volunteers because it was a great, great day, a weekend. Also attended the county ribbon cutting at South Side Park for the new pickleball and basketball courts. Also attended a groundbreaking at Beaufort Memorial Hospitals Bluffton Campus last Wednesday and attended the South Coast Cyber Summit with several council members earlier today, so that's my report. I'll turn to my right, Councilman Mitchell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Must be my midnight voice that you're hearing. So anyway, on the twenty sixth of April, I did the welcome for the city and our citizens at the Institute Institute for the Study of the Reconstruction Era Symposium at U S C B entitled Breathing Democracy Into Spaces. On two May, presented the city resolution on behalf of the city to the wife and family of the late Reverend Hodges of Tabernacle Church. Twenty four April, we attended the T C L State of the College Lunch and keynote address. Last Friday, pardon me, also attended the ribbon cutting at South Side for the pickleball courts and basketball courts. And again, just want to give a shout out to county councilwoman and Chair Alice Howard, you know, for her making possible the full basketball court there. I don't know that that would have happened without her support. Oh, last Wednesday, Thursday, along with Councilman Litzus, we attended the twenty twenty five South Carolina Community Development Association Annual Meeting at Hilton Head. It was very interesting, I thought. They talked about E I and government and how we could use it effectively, short term rental briefings, along with planning and zoning briefings and civility and ethics in government. And I think I have one more. Oh, yesterday, again, Neil and I were at the United Way Annual Meeting where they unveil, what's the name of it, the portable?
Shower of dignity.
Shower of dignity. Shower of dignity.
Shower of dignity, which which is a mobile trailer device where folks who are not fortunate to have where can have facilities to to bathe and other hygiene requirements, which I think is is really wonderful. So that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, Councilman Skolletti?
So I missed a lot of events over the past month and I apologize for that. My my son has actually had some health issues and we were back and forth to Atlanta. We just spent the last week there. He had surgery that we hope will be successful, but because of that, I did actually miss my leadership graduation. Fortunately, prior to that, I was able to work with my team. I was the red team and we created a class video that was able to be presented at the graduations, my understanding. And then as a as a class, we also worked to gift Connie and Rob with something. I have a a copy of the metal, this is a paper one, obviously, but we had a metal plaque done. Alpha Graphics did an amazing job helping us design and come up with this. And the idea is is that we would plant two Japanese maple trees in Cuthbert Park. This was a forty year anniversary for the Leadership Beaufort, and so the theme was maple. Sorry, ruby was the theme. So I'm going to read this just in in honor of Connie and Rob. This was presented to them at the Leadership Graduation, but because I missed it, I wanted to read it here tonight. So forty years, Beaufort, South Carolina, Leadership Beaufort, with heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering dedication to the Leadership Institute. We, the fortieth class of Leadership graduates, present this ruby themed plaque. Your passion and commitment have shaped generations of leaders and left an indelible mark on our community. In honor of your legacy, two Japanese maple trees are planted at the Cuthbert Park, symbolizing the enduring strength and growth of your contributions. Now, those trees haven't been planted yet, but we did get P tax recommendation to plant those trees and we're working with Public Works now to to move forward on getting the trees. And then I think the idea is to have some kind of a ceremony in which we we plant and have Connie and Rob there. So I'm just very thankful to have been selected to go through Leadership Beaufort this year. I learned a lot, it was an amazing experience and I would recommend it to anybody interested. Definitely high caliber and unfortunately, I did have to miss the the graduation, but it was it was an excellent experience.
Is the plaque going in the park also?
Yes, that's the plan.
I ask but not late.
No, I haven't done one, but I'm going to do it very briefly, so. No, no, you're fine. For the first time, for the second time in history, I missed Taste of Beaufort, which I regret that I had to, but I had commitments with family out of town, so I could not be there. But heard great accolades to wonderful weather, but great organization and staff and volunteers are to be. But heard great accolades to wonderful weather, but great organization and staff and volunteers are to be commended on that. I attended the county tax referendum meeting that the county put on in Bluffton. They are leaning towards a 1% based on capital projects, which can also include transportation, but they feel, given the history of the transportation issues, that they're safer in going with the capital. I have a different conversation about this, but they would prefer to go to capital. I shared comments of our needs and also willingness to work with them, obviously, on the capital penny, if that's the direction to go. But made it very clear that if efforts were not made to educate and, and advocate by an outside institution that can do that, i.e. the Chambers of Commerce, Megan and Jean, we need to have what was successfully done in previous referendums with an organization that is actually advocating for the 1% and having good outreach from the standpoint of Rotary Clubs, organizations, civic organizations, and so forth, to make sure that they're getting the good coverage of advocacy and offsetting any negatives that people have from failed transportation projects in 2018, et cetera, specifically. That's all I got, in essence of time.
Okay, so most of where I've been, it kind of mirrors where the mayor's been, and Councilman Mitchell, there'd been a few other things, but I'm not going to go on and on with that. I want to say belated, happy clerks. It was National City Clerks Week last week, and we missed it, and I just want to say a belated, happy clerks, National Clerks Week to our clerk, Tracy. We thank you, and we appreciate all you do for us and for the city.
He's buying. He's buying.
We all missed it.
I missed it.
It was National Clerks Week, I discovered. Anyway, pursuant to Title 30, Chapter 4, Section 70A 2 of the South Carolina Code of Law Discussion and Negotiations, incident to propose contractual arrangements with strategic partners pursuant to Title 30, Chapter 4, Section 70A of the South Carolina Code of Law Discussion Regarding Personnel, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Parks, Trees, and Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, Zoning, and Boards of Appeal, and pursuant to Title 30, Chapter 4, Section 70A 1 of the South Carolina Code of Law Discussion Regarding Personnel Appointed by Council, City Manager. I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.